A motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to go in closed session, all in favor. Can I show your hands?
Todd.
Thank you. Okay. Any motion to come out of closed session, please?
I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Motion approved. I'll call this regular meeting for Indian Trail Town Council to order for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. At this time, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain, would you read us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to remain standing for a moment of silence, but tonight's moment of silence, if we would, for the family of Deputy Form, passed away unexpectedly this past week. Everyone may be seated. This time, we have some additions and some deletions to the... B. Oh, oh, right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I thought you were so excited to...
No, I got you.
So excited to just add those items.
You skipped it, man.
Well, when things are out of order and unusual, unfortunately. At this time, I'm going to read Ms. Howe's resignation later, and we need a motion to accept this resignation. I, Shirley J. Howe, resign my position as council member of the Indian Trail, North Carolina, effective immediately dated 8/24/2020. Signed by Shirley. We need a motion to accept Ms. Howe's resignation.
I'll make that motion to accept her resignation.
Morse made the motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Howe. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Okay. That brings us to additions and deletions. I know Mr. McIntyre is going to do them. So first, let's do the additions.
Yeah, we're going to do the additions. For item 4A, we're going to call it 4A1, and that is the introduction of the new town manager. And item 4A2 is the approval of the town manager's contract.
Shall we do it in reverse? No? Okay.
All right. Then, we have an addition, item 4D, legislative update from Senator Todd Johnson, who is in attendance. And then, we have one more, that is item 4D. And then, for 10C, we have, sorry, 10J, we have CARES Act Funding Agreement, that's an addition, 10J. And then, we have one deletion, which is item 10C, Sun Valley Marketplace, request deletion.
Okay. Counsel has all that? You okay?
Yeah. Follow? All right.
All right. Any other additions or deletions? Nope. So then, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to presentations. Item A, introduction...
For A1.
For A1, introduction of the new town manager. Right? It would be only fitting if you would do that.
Mike McLaurin, Mike, if you would please come up, and the council wants to recognize you, and take some action. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Would you like to take a minute? Introduce yourself?
Very briefly, my name is Mike McLaurin.
Yeah, please speak loudly into the microphone.
My name's Mike McLaurin.
Not that loud.
Not that loud. Let's try it again, Tess. My name's Mike McLaurin, and I have lived in this area since 1970, so I have watched this area really grow. And I have spent my entire adult life in local government. The reason I have done that is because I see the importance of how local government helps people and makes life better. And the work that local government does is very important. A little bit about me, I am a graduate, I got a two-year degree from CPCC, and then went to Pfeiffer University in Charlotte. When I finished that, I went to the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, where I have a master's degree. From a work perspective, I started out with Charlotte PD, and that says a little bit about me. That was before the famous merger in '92. And then, I went to work for the Central Island Council of Governments for 20 years, and through that, I saw how this region grew and developed. I then did an interim over in Gaston County, a little town called Stanley, and then I went to Waxahaw for six and a half years. And by then, I had about 38 years in the system, retired out, and did interims all over the state. Been married to my wife for 40-something years, and have grandchildren and children and one great-grandchild.
Well, thank you. Mr. McLaurin?
Yes, sir.
You better make sure you know 40-something exactly when you get home.
I certainly will, sir.
That's some advice there.
I certainly will.
From one married man to another.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move to item B, approval of the town manager's contract. I will need a motion. Doesn't need to read any special way, Ms. Hunter. Oh, right. First, you forgot one.
Well, you just ran into...
Introduction.
You didn't give me a chance.
Okay.
Can I do it now?
Yeah, you can.
I want to make a motion to, so that the town council can appoint Mr. Michael McLaurin as the new town manager for Indian Trail.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to appoint Mike McLaurin as the new town manager, effective August 31st.
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
That's okay, I got your back. As the new Indian Trail Town Manager. All in favor? I will need a follow-up motion, Mr. McIntyre.
And I want to make a motion to approve the employment contract with Mr. McLaurin as the new town manager for Indian Trail, with an effective date of August 31st, 2020.
Mr. McIntyre has made that motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous.
Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you, the staff, and the community, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Okay. That brings us to service awards. Going to give you a quick rundown on this. Not, if anybody's noticed, we've had a little bit of a pandemic going on around, and several local businesses and people specifically, and organizations have stood up and really showed what this town's made of from this perspective. But these individuals' service goes beyond the pandemic. It's nothing new for them. And since we've had nothing but negative the last several months with the pandemic and continued closures, and it's no secret what's been going on. I wanted to recognize, and the town council wanted to recognize, these individuals who have gone above and beyond, not just in the pandemic, but throughout many years that they've been in Indian Trail and Union County. So, we're going to start with Robin Baron. Welcome, Robin.
Hello.
How are you?
I am well, hope you are.
It's nice to meet you.
Do you need a hand?
Oh, I got this, thank you. Actually, I do need a hand, but...
Just checking, just checking.
And it reads, just for those that can't see it, and we'll hold it up, "The town of Indian Trail is honored to present this token of appreciation to Robin Baron on August 25th, 2020, for actively serving the residents of this town by organizing the annual Back to School Bash, participating in UNIRES Rotary, and advocating for those in need throughout Indian Trail and Union County. During the pandemic, when the Back to School Bash needed to raise money, Robin stood tall." No pun intended there, Robin. And didn't hesitate to come around and ask. For you, I'll put on the mask, if you wish. And we'll walk around, or you can come up. I'll come around to you, since obviously they're going to take pictures. Yeah, I might need a hand there. See, you jinxed me.
I asked, I asked.
We call that personalization, Michael.
I'll take a mulligan on that.
What's that?
With the mask?
What's...I mean...
I mean, I'm already dead for it, so nothing else is going to surprise me. I would prefer if you can be my right arm, so...
I'll be your right arm.
If you guys want to turn this way, we'll get an official photo.
I have it on my...
One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. You've got your fans over here.
Oh, these are my fans, thank you. My family, thank you, thank you for coming. And I hope you're still alive. Thank you, guys. Am I supposed to say anything, or do I just get to sit down and take my entourage out?
I'm done with you. You can say something real quick. Please.
Well, yes. I'm going to say something. I'm taking this opportunity to say something. Back in 2005, when I moved here, it was by cause intervention or what have you, and then I met Harris. And this is all about Harris, and, you know, allowing me to be part of this community and being involved as much as I am, because I have a full-time job, and to do what we do is a full-time job, too. And we love our community, and we thank God for being able and providing us the ability to do such amazing things. And I thank everybody that came out and supported me, and I really appreciate it. And I'm not going to get all emotional and cry. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you, Robin. That doesn't mean you can stop doing things, okay? For her, yes. Oh, I got it this time. I'm securing this like a football. I fumbled the first time.
I'm trying to help you, sir.
Which one was it? Tiki, that used to drop the ball? Was Adrian? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but he's still... Our next service award recipient is Food for Families. Larry Helms will come up forward. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. If you want to tell real quick, about a minute, for what Food for Families does?
We feed families that don't have enough food.
Well, that was quick.
And, no, you gave me a minute now.
All right.
So, we do about 300 families a week, and provide a supplement food that's pretty hefty, meat, produce, and a lot of vegetables and canned goods. Typically, in the school year, we're doing about 1,000 students. However, this year, it's really gripped our style, because how in the world do you even get to 1,000 students in school, the way they're setting up the school system? But that's what we do, and we're blessed to be here in Indian Trail. But we've got some great people. I want to share who are board members, if that's okay. Gary Tucker, Sherry Mangum, Jeff Mangum, Amy Nicolai, who does the, she's the only paid person we have, and she works about 25 hours a week. Dwayne Lewis, Tommy Saul, and Amy Gower. I think I'm on that board, too. But we have a lot of great people that help us out, from just a couple of them that's very, very important. Dave Cubbertson. Dave Cubbertson has been great to give money on a weekly basis, or we have, I mean, monthly. We have a project, he wants to help with that project. Dean Harold does the same, John Cochran. First Baptist Church and the members, it's amazing what the members give. First Baptist gives us $12,000, and members give us $17,000 separate from them. And, but we are a 501(c)(3), and we're not controlled by anybody except that board member group that we talked about. We also get a lot of support from Elevation, from New Hope, and also Cook Farms down in, I guess that's southeast of, southwest of Monroe. A lot of zucchini, squash, those kind of things, that's really, really helpful. Been doing this for eight years, and people ask me, say, "Where's the money come beyond these folks?" And I say, "He sends it." And there's a lot of word meaning behind that, because it is amazing, there's no way that we can do what we do. We bought 100,000, when the food got short, we bought $100,000 worth of canned goods. As soon as we got it delivered, that's about three tractor-trailer loads. Soon as we got it delivered, Second Harvest decided that they would give us $24,000 worth of food a month. And that's been a great addition to our project. But it's all about trying to fulfill the needs of the families. We don't want any kid to go hungry, or to go to bed hungry. And I saw one several years ago, and the mother said, "Every time before I put my kids to bed, they'll ask me, 'Are we going to have food tomorrow?'" And if that doesn't get to your heart, you didn't have one, so you're dead already. But anyway, that's a little bit about, we invite you to come, we take volunteers, we screen them, just like you do, and we're over there behind that insurance company that's got some great big numbers. His name, Larry S. Helms and Associates, so it's right of Yost Road in Indian Trail Fairview. But thank you for inviting me here. Thank you for what each of you do. It's a, it's a job that's hard to find joy in it, isn't it, sometimes?
Yeah, the job took my arm.
Sir, that's...
The job took my arm, Larry. I know.
Have you ever been there to do that? I went last year. It's another reason, when you're bored, there's a country...
Okay. You can, you'll be happy. Maybe it washes out. Such as some pretty trees or something.
Thank you for all your years of service.
Unless it's something she needs. All right. And our third recipient of this is Steve Cilio. Is he here? Oh, there he is. I try not to see you. Steve owns Cilio's Deli, and when the pandemic began, not, and, I'll back up real quick, Steve's always helped the community when in need, whether it be the high school, a high school, a family in need. And when the pandemic hit, Steve went into action and had just nonstop providing lunches for students and having a crew that was delivering it to their homes, correct? It was going to their homes since school was out. And that's going way above and beyond. But I watched it in action one day, and it... There's no words, Steve, for what you do.
Altogether, we fed over 1,600 people during it, whether it was the homeless shelter or giving $50 bills at Harris Teeter for the elderly, gift baskets, Easter baskets to every kid, boxes of food for every family for Easter. We raffled off multiple pizzas, we did seven atrium centers, we did two emergency rooms. We gave away 100 fishing poles for kids who didn't have it to get outside. We did over 200 people at the homeless shelter. Altogether, it added up to about 1,600 people that we fed during that time. Some of the kids were 30 minutes in each direction. But we opened up the gift of giving, and that's what it was called, and just kept going and going and going. Once I heard that someone was not going to have a lunch, two things I love to do, make kids happy and make sandwiches. And I brought the two together.
Oh, you make sandwiches?
I'm the sandwich king. My son is taking over that role soon, but we're honored to be here.
Well, Steve, and we're honored to have you in Indian Trail, and I'm honored to call you my friend also.
Yes, of course, always.
I expect to see this hating in a sandwich shop. You don't understand, you come from out, you can come from behind the counter. Have a seat, please. You know your place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This brings us to our new business recognition. We haven't been able to do this in a while. And we have one new business on the agenda for tonight, and that's Indian Trail Dental Studio, Harry Patel.
Hello. Should I come up here?
Yes, you should.
I've got some information for all of you, if I can pass that out.
Well, Harry.
Yeah. Hey, Michael, how are you?
First, we'll give you about two to three minutes to introduce the business.
Okay.
Tell us where you're located.
So, I'm Harry Patel. My wife is Hasme Patel. We opened up a dental practice on Old Monroe Road, right across Heritage. There's Randish Fresh Produce, the Food Lion, Dollar Tree, Provenza Apartments. It's the new construction that's there. We have the corner lot there. We want to target dentistry from a different perspective. We want to bring relationship back to it, back into it, so we label it as relationship dentistry. That's the focus. We have a different flow when you come in there. We want to give back to the community. And I guess the biggest thing for us is, we want to make sure we value the people and the dental care they receive. So, every patient has a two-hour block. We don't want to see 15 patients a day, even at maximum capacity. My wife does not, we don't want to see 15 patients. We want to see six patients, seven patients a day, but provide them with high-quality dental care. Some of the things we're doing differently, we have a meditation room in our practice, because we understand that dentistry can cause a little bit of anxiety, nervousness. So, we have a Zen meditation room that our patients can relax in before, after, during. When the patient comes in there, the first person they see is the dentist. We want the patient to know their dentist. We don't want them to just know them for the three minutes of drill work that they're doing. She sits down with the patient, she learns about the patient, the patient learns about her. There's a trust, there's a comfort level that's being built, and the relationship is what we value. We want you to be comfortable with who's taking care of you. So then, after that, we do x-rays, the whole patient workflow, and we want to make sure we know your name, we want to make sure we know your family, we want to make sure it's more personal than just a number. And that is why we opened it. As far as me personally, I have a business here in Union County also. I'm involved with Council on Aging, I'm a board member there. I'm involved with the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce. So, we're all about giving back. During the COVID pandemic, when it first happened, we made 3,200 fabric masks that are such as these here, handmade per atrium health guidelines, and we donated them to seniors. We were on the news about it. So, we're all about giving back, and when I had a chance to meet the mayor, I thought it was fantastic. I'm all about giving back, so I've asked him if there's any opportunities for me to be involved again, into my community, give back. I'd love to serve that, I'd love to get involved. We're ready to, you know, we're not trying to make a million dollars, that's not our goal, but we want to give back to our community, because if you don't support your neighbors, then there's no joy to that. So, that's us in a nutshell.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you want to give all that to Kathy, she'll pass it out.
Yep. And if you, if you'd ever like to come by just to take a look at it, please feel free to give me a call, even if we're closed. We live in Union County, so I'm happy to just run down, show you the practice, show you the flow. It's state-of-the-art, everything's brand new, it's great care, so come by.
Oh, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, many, many years ago. Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Pleasure. Thank you very much. Enjoy.
Thank you.
That brings us to our special guest. Legislative update from Senator Todd Johnson, welcome. How you doing, Todd?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for having me here tonight. It's obviously a trying time for everyone, and I think the way you guys have been able to do it, to make sure everyone has their opportunity to be heard and hear what's going on, and accessibility is important. Open and transparent government is very important, and I think you guys have done a great job with that, so I commend you on that. Also, I don't know if the manager, congratulations to you as well as the council. I know it's, it's a trying time for many folks, so you're coming in at a good time. You've got a gentleman that has a lot of experience. I think he was with Waxahaw when I was on the county commission, so it's nice to see some friendly faces, and I wish you much success. You guys are in luck. Politicians, we like to talk a lot, so I prepared comments to try to keep myself brief, because I'll stay up here all night if I don't. But I'll touch on a couple of things, but I won't, if the mayor will allow, I'd love the opportunity to answer questions if that's acceptable. So, I'll just touch on a few things, and then we can save more time for questions, because I want to talk about what's important to you. So, coming here tonight, you know, a lot of folks want to say, "Hey, what's the update?" And I wish I was coming with glowing news and exciting stuff. But as you know, here in Indian Trail, North Carolina's facing a very trying time. We don't know what's going to happen, just being honest. We go back next week into session as kind of a, what we hope is maybe the last time this year to kind of figure out what we're going to do in terms of the CARES Act. There's still some funds left in the CARES Act that we're trying to allocate and make sure that it's given appropriately to folks that are in need and need assistance. So, coming here tonight, you know, I could kind of sum up what's going on in Raleigh and just say COVID. That's what's happening. That controls our discussions and everything that goes along with that. And since March, you know, it's been very frustrating, because we have all these struggles, and people are hurting. And I'm sure each and every one of you have had the phone calls from folks that have owned businesses, family businesses, for three, four generations, and these folks are going to lose the business on their watch. These are businesses that they started, that their grandfather, their great-grandfather started 18 years ago, and it's going to fall on their watch. So, they're needing help. And so, what we've been trying to do is make sure we help these businesses and help these small farms and families that are just struggling. They've never asked for help, but now they're being asked, being forced to ask for help. So, it's been, it's been a struggle, every day, hearing from constituents that have just needed, just needed a helping hand. What's been very frustrating, at least as part of the legislature, is, you know, we remember growing up as a kid, you remember the old cartoon with, you know, "I'm just a bill," and it's got a bill on Capitol Hill, and it's the little cartoon character, and talks, walks you through the role of government and how bills are passed and laws come into, come into action. A lot of the stuff that's happened since March has been outside of the legislative process. And because of that, the legislative process, we've been basically shut out... And because of that, the legislative process, we've been basically shut out from the discussion. So there's a lot of frustration in our level because we are the, are the representative body. We're the closest to the people we serve. And so it's not some random person in some random county. These are folks that we go to church with, people that we go to school with, the people that live in our neighborhoods. And not having the ability to say, I'm here, I'm going to help you because it's outside of our control. It's been very frustrating and, and quite honestly, it's been very heartbreaking. Um, I don't get in the game or I try to attempt as much as possible to stay out of the game of pointing fingers and saying, hey, it's not me. You, you gotta go talk to somebody else. It's, it's out of my hands. I don't, I don't think that's productive and I don't think it ends up, um, providing any service to the citizens we represent. So for example, if, if Todd called me tomorrow and he had an issue with a, a VA benefit or something, that's not a state function. He didn't know, he just called me and asked for help. I don't simply say, hey, Todd, that's a federal issue. You need to call somebody out there. It's not, that's not providing service to our constituents. What we want to do is say, okay, Todd, let's see what we can do to help you. We'll reach out to our contacts at maybe Senator Tillis's office, Senator Burr's office or something, and try to at least coordinate that. So passing blame is not what we do as public servants. We want to help people. So last year, prior to session, uh, some of you may have been there. What the Union County General Assembly's delegation, so we have three house members and I'm the senator, and then we have one other senator that represents Fairview, uh, just a small portion up in the northwest part of the, uh, county. What we tried to do was get everyone, all the towns, at least send a couple of, uh, representatives and discuss a plan going forward. Things that, that you needed, things that maybe we could work together on. And we had that meeting before session last year. Well, session ended up being the longest or second longest long session in the history of the state, then followed by COVID. So we, we didn't actually ever adjourn last year. We just kind of kept, take a month off and then go to the next step. So we haven't been able to circle back. So what I would like to do is after we finally can adjourn Sine Di this year, that we are able to get the, get the municipalities back. Because I think, and obviously I can't speak for my counterparts in the House, but at least for me personally, I see my role, serving the constituents and serving the people of Union County, but also being an asset to the town. It's not me versus, versus you. It's us working together in, in harmony to try to do what's best for the citizens we represent. Because the people that you represent, I represent them too. So let's work together on that. And I hope to continually, uh, grow that relationship as we serve the people in Indian Trail and in Union County. One of the issues that I know is heavy on your heart and heavy on mine is the road situation. It's an ugly situation. I drive on the same roads. I sit in the same traffic. I have the same, have to deal with these stupid roundabout things out here on Highway seventy-four and trying to get turned around and get across there and having people honking horns at you and people not knowing how to use it. I deal with the same thing. My wife drives on that. My fifteen-year-old son that got his permit in June, he drives on that too. So I, I understand the concerns that we have about the roads. And I want you to know that it's not falling on deaf ears. Uh, I know firsthand exactly what we're dealing with. So I wanted to kind of give you an update on what we've done, at least in the General Assembly, to, to attempt to address some of the issues. Again, I, I don't like pointing the fingers, but I, I think it's not very well known, but DOT does not fall under the legislature of the state. It actually falls under the Department of Administration. If you remember years back, there was always a lot of road money, you, you know, up here around Charlotte, we got all this congestion and the roads are bad, but then you could go down east. And I'm telling you, man, you'd be riding on four, six lane roads and you might pass one car every little bit. That's when it was controlled by the legislature. And so whoever controlled the General Assembly, they directed all the road money. So it was better government to take that out of the legislative process, to make it more of a fair process so that every area could get their fair share. Well, that was the movement. And I do firmly believe that maybe Union County is not getting its fair share now. So we've got to work together with the municipalities, the state delegation, and try to make sure that we get that road money here. But some things that we've done, uh, at the General Assembly to address the issues, there's been, uh, and these are not my words and I'm going to paraphrase them, but they're words of our state auditor. There's been some pretty, pretty bad mismanagement in DOT. Uh, nine hundred contracts were, uh, suspended. Uh, funds, cash balances were over two point two billion dollars. That's billion with a B. And then only sixteen months later, they're down around two hundred and fifty million dollars. Now, you would think two billion dollars, we should see some improvement somewhere. Problem is, we didn't see a whole lot of improvement. And we couldn't see what this cash had gone for. And I would think it's very important that we all, as elected officials, remember something very important, at least I do, and I'm sure many of you do too. It's not the state's money. It's not Union County's money. It's not Indian Trails money. It's the citizens' money that they've put in our care to help provide services and help provide the needs of our community. So it's, it, we have to always remember that the money that you send to the state, it's still your money. We need to make sure it's being distributed equitably. So what we did, um, COVID, just to be honest with you, COVID exacerbated the concerns from the DOT, the, the mismanagement that was going on in DOT. So with, we had a couple of hurricanes, three or four hurricanes. And so that actually put a strain on DOT. But then we are funding DOT through gas tax. So now everybody's working from home, nobody's getting out. The gas taxes have plummeted. So that simply exacerbated the problem that we had. Um, so this did give us an opportunity, you know, it's always best in, in times of trials and tribulations to try to use that to kind of right the ship and, and get us on a better course. So we took some short-term and some long-term actions. I want to kind of give you an, uh, just an update on what we did. In the short term, what we did was we provided NC DOT with an influx of cash, your cash, ninety million dollars. That was simply just to kind of move us out of park because we were in park. If you remember driving up and down seventy-four, the grass was knee-high. It was a danger. People couldn't even pull out of a, uh, an intersection without having to, because they couldn't see. So it was dangers. So we were able to get that money out of the tax, out of the coffers into DOT. So that was extra money that came in. We also provided, uh, other financial help, including immediate reimbursements for some economic development projects, build-in C-bonds. And then more on a long-term, long-term sustainability, we established the Transportation Emergency Reserve. And what that was designed to do, set aside money for major disasters. We went back and looked at fifteen years, fifteen years of DOT's planning. You guys do a lot of planning. That's, it's good, it's, it's responsibility. Well, part of their fifteen years, they had an emergency figure. And I'm not going to recite the figure because it was either forty or sixty million and I can't remember. I was trying to remember it over there, but it was, it was this figure. Out of fifteen years, do you know how many years they met budget? Two. Two years they met budget. They blew this budget out year over year over year. Well, doing the same thing over and over and over, you know the old saying, you can't do that. So trying to establish this reserve in a way that it will be prepared because we're in North Carolina. It's not a matter of when, if, it's a matter of when the next hurricane's coming. Next disaster's going to come. We live in North Carolina, we're on the coast, it's going to happen. We've got to prepare ourselves for it. We also adjusted the motor fuels distribution formula to funnel more money into the highway fund. For oversight, we now require weekly and monthly reports to the DOT, of the DOT financials outlook. We've required the North Carolina Auditor to audit the department's cash management and control systems. We've restructured the Board of Transportation to increase financial oversight of the department. And now both the Board of Transportation and the off, what they call OSBM, which is the Office of State Budget and Management, must approve their annual spend plan. Oversight's not a bad thing. We all need checks and balances. Our entire government was built on checks and balances. So go, oversight's a good thing. It's going to take time though, for these things that we put in place to actually begin to work. And then, um, I can tell you what we have done, but sometimes it's more important what we have not done, what we did not do. There are many states, and if you go and you, you watch the news, I try not to watch it too much, but if you watch the news or you, you read about what's going on in other states, most if, many if not most other states, they're not in the same situation that North Carolina's in. Ten years of fiscal responsibility, living within your means, sometimes you have to say no. It's hard, but sometimes you have to say no. You may even have to say, it's not a bad idea, but not right now. Put us in a position where we had a cash reserve that we could help at least absorb some of these, uh, added expenses or lacks of revenue that are coming in. So North Carolina had a strong economy before, and we're going to have a strong economy afterwards. It's going to take a little time, but we'll be there. This comes through judicious budgetary, uh, restraints that we put on ourselves to make sure that we lived within our means. Um, so post-November, my hope is that we once again can get together as, as a community, municipal leaders, county leaders, state delegation, and come up with a plan and ideas that we can work toward over the next session. I was asked, uh, I get asked often, you know, how was your first term in the Senate? And I, and I'm quick to remind them, my first year was the second longest long session in the history of North Carolina. Year number two was COVID. So I'm pretty excited about what next year's going to be. It's got to be, it's got to be pretty good. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, thank you for letting me come. I, I just wanted to hit on a couple of things and would open it up to questions if the mayor would allow them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go down the line. Mr. Head, uh, Mr. Morse, do you have any questions?
What, what is the expected timeframe? I mean, you don't have the crystal ball, but for things to get back to a, a better state as far as funds from, from the state to the municipalities and DOT and the whatnot?
Sure. We go, we are hoping because with the, um, the delay on filing of taxes from April to July, um, which I, we felt like at the state level, we needed to mirror what the federal government was doing as, as an effort to, to help people. Um, we are hoping to have estimates next week. Um, I will tell you that the forecasts that we were receiving are pretty grim. Uh, the state operates at twenty-five billion with a B, twenty-five billion dollar budget. There is estimates that I've seen that were four billion, five billion, even six billion dollars short. So we're looking at upwards of twenty percent shortage in the state budget for this year. Um, there is a common, I will say, uh, positive outlook that we will be able to have a narrow U recovery and be able to get back into, into full form pretty soon. Uh, I don't have the crystal ball a- as we mentioned, but, uh, I think we've at least taken the right, uh, decisions and the right directions into making sure that our fiscal house is in order so that we can get as quick a recovery because counties depend on state funds, municipalities depends on these funds, and quite honestly, our citizens depend on these funds. You know, something I, if you've ever heard me speak or whenever I'm in a committee meeting or any type of meeting, I think it's always important that we remind ourselves, and I say it to remind myself, we look at these budgets and it's got all these lines, it's got, you know, what this item is and it's got a figure beside it. It's got this item, it's got another figure beside it. We see numbers and what happens is we get in these meetings and kind of go through the motions and we're reading all these things. And it's easy to say, oh, we'll cut this, we'll add this, well, that's not important, we're going to reduce this. Behind every budget line is a person and a family and an organization. There's somebody that depends on that line. And so we're making these tough decisions. So being mindful of that as we go forward, there is a desire, and this is not a partisan thing, there is a desire by every member of the General Assembly to get us back into full force as soon as possible. The decisions made in terms of phases and stuff, I will tell you, is outside of the scale of the legislature. Those decisions that we have not been brought to the table at all, inquired on, anything, we've had zero participation in that, which is what it is at this point in time.
Thank you so much.
Todd?
First off, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Um, appreciate it. Uh, I know when you get in the economy rolling and all that, I know we want more people to live and work in Union County. And I know you was on the board of the community colleges in North Carolina. So I know they earmark different programs usually for community colleges in the area to help attract businesses. And I think I've heard you or maybe someone else talk about this. Do you know of any budgeted or potential programs that maybe might be coming to Union County that would help, uh, attract jobs? I think I heard at one time, we may have something that's called like an aseptic.
I appreciate you asking that question. I promise you, I didn't, I didn't, didn't call Todd ahead of time and ask him to bring that up.
I got, you know, I got a.
Absolutely.
Just got out of, you know, the community college basically through their early high schools. So, you know, there's kind of interesting with the community college working and what do you think of what's going on?
Well, the community college has a special place in my heart. Uh, I have always believed that the community college provides an opportunity like no other. I did have the pleasure of, uh, and privilege to serve on the State Board of Community Colleges for four years prior to being in the Senate. And, and this gives folks an opportunity for upward mobility. And it gives them the training and the life skills and, and the, the trade skills that they can have. And so something that Representative Arup and, and myself, we worked on diligently last, uh, last year. And we're able to secure some of that i- in the budget or in the mini-budget that we were able to get passed is an aseptic training facility. For folks that don't know what an aseptic training facility is, what that is, is when you're dealing with medical equipment or anything dealing with pharmaceuticals, you have to have folks, they, they work in what we call an aseptic environment. So that's a sterile environment. Well, there's a lot of training that goes into that to be able to have these jobs. These jobs are not ten dollar an hour jobs. These are well-paid jobs. And we have Glenmark Pharmaceuticals here in Monroe. And what we have found is that many of these organizations, they like to, because it's such a specialized training, these businesses, competitors even, like to be in a, in a similar geographic area to have the ability to pull employment from a specific area. So we worked hard on getting this aseptic training facility with South Piedmont Community College. And through that, what that's going to provide, it's going to provide the only aseptic training facility west of ninety-five in North Carolina that's not in Research Triangle Park. So this is a big deal for, for Union County, the Charlotte area. And you're going to have the ability to attract some of these pharmaceutical companies that are, are, are offering higher paid jobs. And more importantly, I like to say, we have one of the best school systems in the state. I want to keep these students here. I don't want them to go somewhere else. We trained them, we brought them up, we've educated them, let's keep them here and, and let them call Union County home. So that's one of the things we worked on that I felt was very proud of and very excited about. Now, again, COVID changes a lot of things and it changes the timeline. So my, my hope and my prayer is that it may just have shifted the, the timeline a little bit, but we'll still work hard on that to make sure it comes to pass.
Kind of still on track.
Oh, it's definitely still on track, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up.
Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for coming to us. Um, I have a really, it's a really simple question, but how, how do citizens convey and us as the town representatives convey, um, certain things that we'd like to see? For instance, Indian Trail right now is split in two. We have seventy-four on the other side of seventy-four, right? Um, there is a proposed, Monroe Road is, you know, budget constrained, so we know Monroe Road is delayed in terms of its construction. But the complaints I hear a lot from the residents, and I see it on social media, but you also hear it from people, is the design of that super street there on seventy-four. Some people refuse to go to the, to try and get to the other side because of all the turns and the danger that, that exists there. How can we as the town get the state to understand that that's not the design that we'd like for Monroe Road? How do we do that? Because we know the state owns the road. We, the town, we've committed money towards building the road. But the thing is, it's going to further divide the town into three different quadrants. And so that, that's, that's sort of the question. How do we go about registering that interest with the state or the DOT? Um, and having them really take it into consideration versus just pushing us off?
Very good question. And, and I'll tell you that's something, you know, I think about our neighbors to the West, Stallings has been dealing with having basically a two towns. So you had Northern Stallings and Southern Stallings. And the two would never cross because you're basically with that Highway seventy-four in the middle. Uh, and then adding another layer here would truly put it in a, in a three quadrant, or not a quadrant, but whatever, three sections.
Yeah, yeah.
Of the town. These decisions are made by DOT. And I will tell you, the answer that you're going to get, because it's when I've called, because again, I drive on these same roads and I hate when I'm trying to get over here to the Sun Valley to, to watch the, I live in Unionville and I'm trying to go to the Sun Valley to watch a movie or go to the Publix, then I have to deal with that stupid intersection. These decisions, they are said, at least what we are told, they're based on science and data. So DOT will quickly tell you, their job is the public safety and all they care about is safety. Now, mind you, if you go and look at all the crash reports in Indian Trail, I guarantee you they have to do. you they have to deal with that super street, probably 80% of them. But they are going to tell you that it's based on data and science that they're using to determine what type of intersections and roads go in. So, what I would tell you, the only way is to stay in contact with DOT, the local folks, and I'm sure that y'all have worked with the local DOT folks here, stay in contact with them, stay in contact with us, because I promise you, we're staying in contact and saying, this is not what we want. Outside of that, I do not know the answer to your question.
All right.
The main thing is, if they don't hear you the first time, make them not hear you the next 28 times. Just keep telling them, tell them, and voicing your opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry I didn't have a better answer for you.
I, it confirms what we know.
Again, thank you for coming. Got a question of revenue stream. I've done a little bit of research here recently, and North Carolina is probably one of a handful of states that doesn't use impact fees as a revenues program. Is there any possibility of bringing impact fees back?
Short answer or a long answer?
Whichever one's the best.
I will tell you that the short answer is no. The more detailed answer would be, there are a large, so in Raleigh, we have 170 of us, and some of us have these opinions, some of us have these opinions. And what happens is, there are a lot of folks that have different interests and different businesses. There's been a, you know, we've talked about it, and I will tell you that because we are in, most of the discussions that are surrounded that are in more of the high-growth areas, Union County definitely falls into that, so Representative Arp, Representative Brody, Representative Horn, we've had been part of these discussions. We're fortunate to have Senator Newton in the Fairview section. He represents Cabarrus County in Fairview, so he's in a high-growth area too. But then, when you get into other parts of the state, especially down east, where they would love to have one one-hundredth of the growth that we have, because they have decreasing populations and tax base, they won't know a part of it because it can stymie their ability to grow. So, what we've found is that we've had the discussions, but in the end, we've got to be able to get 26 in the Senate and 61 in the House and a governor willing to sign the bill to be able to get it to come to fruition. I don't foresee that being able to be changed based on the current statutes that we have. The appeals court, there was, you know, there was a lawsuit, it was peeled, and it was ruled three zeros, so at that point in time, it was pretty much dead. It's not, you know, in government, no means more not right now, because you never know. Personalities change, people change all the time. So, I think it's still something that we need to be paying attention to because even here, it affects Indian Trail, it affects Union County. Quite frankly, it affects me too, because again, we're driving on the roads. I've got two kids in the school system. My taxes do not pay the amount that it would cost to send my two kids to the public schools. So, it's definitely, there's definitely a burden by growth. Now, I will tell you, don't throw any, don't put your water bottles down, don't throw them at me. It's better, it's a better problem than the alternative of having a decreasing population. But trying to figure out a way to navigate it in a responsible way, and, you know, we've all had our struggles and there's been some things that we hadn't been, maybe messed up or wish we hadn't have done, but I don't see that particular thing being an issue that's going to come up in the next couple of years. Best answer I could give you.
Thank you.
Todd, thank you for coming. I'm kind of mimic many phone conversations you had with me over Monroe Road and DOT and the impact fees and everything, so you answer the phone when I call, so. Thank you. Thanks for taking the time to come out.
I got off my notes, I'm sorry. It was supposed to be six minutes.
That's okay. I'll show up when you're in session and ramble on.
I will, and I appreciate you bringing that up, and I want everybody to hear what I'm saying. I think this is on a live feed, write this email address down. My email address is todd.johnson@ncleg.net. Feel free to send it out to whoever, anybody has any problems, please reach out to us. We will help any way possible. If you're in the Raleigh area, just give me a heads up, would love to have you come by and visit with us, visit with whoever, we'll take you around, show you whatever you want, whatever you're interested in. But appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and anything I can do, as I said earlier, my, part of my role is to be an asset for you and for the town. So, please reach out and feel free to use that asset.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give you a second to leave. At this time, we're going to open up the public comments. As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes, and I don't have that whole spiel. That's okay. We'll use good judgment. We have a couple of people that signed up, so first, Dennis Gay. Oh, yes. Well, I get him. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speaker to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to your airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. Respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect the town employee's right to a fair hearing on your grievance. Mr. Gay. Dennis.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you for having me tonight. Have a few comments. First of all, Kathy and Larry Shirley's daughter and son-in-law are here tonight. I want them to hear that Shirley has made a huge difference to our town. She has kept special interests out. She fought hard for that. I really appreciate that. Today, I think we have some special interests that are working in the town again, and we're going to sorely miss Shirley. I'd like to talk about that. We've got, Karen was nice enough a few months ago to talk about people staying in their lane. And I think that we've got a situation where some folks don't stay in their lane, and I'm not going to mention any names, but there are lanes that you stay in and protocol that you should use. And when you want a personal, personal people that you want to put in places, there's protocol to do it. We have somebody that I really thought a lot of at first. I think they had a great future, and I think they have gotten off the lane that they should be in. They should stay in their lane, and they should let, they should let the government, be the government, be a democracy, not a dictatorship. And I would, I don't even have to mention the person's name because I think they know who they are. Appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gay. Kathy?
Good evening. I don't know if you know me, my name is Kathy Salter. My mom is Shirley Howe, so hopefully I can get through this. On behalf of my mom, I'd like to thank the community for allowing her to advocate and represent their interest for the betterment of Indian Trail. She loved this town, and she's humbled to have been able to serve. She wanted to thank everybody for their support throughout the years. There's too many people to mention. A few are Kathy, Trina, Susan, Abby, just, and everybody has been so kind to her. And you know my mom, she wanted to give a special shout-out to the law enforcement, that she always appreciated what they did. It's a hard job, and they do it well. She would also, let me go from here. She would also like to thank those who provided her with support, insight, meetings that they, you know, just talking on the phone, emails, you guys run all that around all the time, so she enjoyed that, and she appreciated everything to help gain insight into problems and situations that were going on in the town through the years. She believed that infrastructure is important to the town and that growth is essential, but that with that growth, you have to have schools, you have to have roads, you have to have water, sewer, all the things necessary to be successful, and the developers should have to contribute and pay their share for that to happen, to keep Indian Trail the beautiful town that it is. She has a dislike for those who abuse their position and power for personal gain, especially people that change their position after they get elected. And mom feels in keeping with the intent to govern with honesty and integrity that she thinks Dennis Gay would be a wonderful replacement for her. And then finally, thank you for letting me speak to you, and she wishes everybody success and happiness in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have one other general public comment which was emailed. Says, dear council members, I hope you're all well in these very strange times across our country. I know meeting via Zoom, or meetings via Zoom are indeed a different way to conduct our business, but they seem to be working. The planning board had our first on 7/21/20. We had four items on our agenda. We hurried presentations as we would normally, but then we waited until the 23rd to hold our vote to give time for the public to respond. The two major projects in question were passed with a four-to-one recommendation of yes from the planning board. As a planning board member, I find my responsibility is to make my decision based on not only my own opinion, but also what I hear from my friends and neighbors. I have often even asked a stranger who is an Indian Trail resident how they felt about a certain project. Often, as you know, their concerns are two things, traffic and schools. Those are legitimate issues that we as a town face, but when those two factors are out of the equation, they are 95% in favor of growth. They want nicer restaurants and some commercial development on the Walmart side of 74. They are mortified by our donut hole problem, and those, and in those cases, we all agree, keep our money, don't let, okay, don't let that slip away to the county because they will be using our resources without contributing. There are two large projects we voted on that included apartments. I can only speak for myself, I was one of the four vote, yes votes. I love the location of these projects. I feel like the developers are trying to give us a high quality, give us high quality to keep Indian Trail a safe and beautiful community. And more deputies. Okay. And can you tweak it a bit? Sure. Am I correct in thinking that more tax base grows, the more likely we are to have more deputies to our Indian Trail Sheriff's Department? If we say no, our current traffic issues will remain. At least these developers, with these developers, developments, the developer will be responsible for making traffic improvements. Will it add more traffic? Yes, but major road improvements will help mitigate and improve on present circumstances. This project could easily be moved a few miles up the road to Monroe, and we would suffer the traffic impact without improvements to our projects and absent of the potential tax dollars wasted. I also wanted to let you know that another factor in my thought process was our current situation as a country. I think as a result of the pandemic, a lot more people will be working from home, schooling from home. I'm not saying our traffic problem is going to disappear, I'm just saying to be realistic. I have never had to deal with NC DOT like you have, but am I correct in thinking, if these projects go to Monroe or Stallings, won't NC DOT fix their roads first due to the density? I am thoroughly enjoying being on the planning board. Thank you for listening to our recommendations as well as our thoughts and opinions behind them, and thank you all for your hard work and long hours you put in. I know how hard you really work. Please call me if you want to talk. That would be Michelle Reese. Okay? And there were no further comments for public comments, so I will close the public comment period. If there's council feedback on any of the comments, I will start with Mr. Head down here.
Kathy?
Yes.
I know that Shirley probably has a huge file, because she always, whenever we were talking about it, she could go back in history. Is that file going to be safe?
We'd be happy to give all the paperwork to the town if you wanted to do whatever you like to do.
If nobody wants it, I'll take it. I think it's a lot of it.
There is, there's a lot.
And what would your intent be to do with that?
From a history lesson, understand what's been going on and try to understand, and I don't know if there's notes in there or not. Shirley was the one that got me to run, okay? So, she has a special place in my heart, and anything that I can derive from what she's been able to do, if there's notes, you know, would just, I would just like to have that to hopefully help me improve as a council member, so.
I hope you have a pickup truck.
We'll talk later, thanks.
Nothing? No comments? Todd?
To Kathy and Shirley's family is, I just want to let you know that it was a pleasure serving with Shirley. The people of Indian Trail love Shirley. She had the utmost in integrity, what she did for this town, and she fought, a lot of times she was up here with a gang of men, and she never backed down from nobody, so she served with honor, integrity. I was really honored to have served with her. She was just welcoming me with open arms, and I really appreciate that. I've watched Kathy, you, and your sister Sue, and Larry take care of her, and I will tell you, she told me she loved you. She may not have acted like it always, but she certainly appreciated what you did, and I told her many a times, she was lucky to have daughters and Larry that would come up here and take the time that y'all did to take care of her during this, you know, process. And I just, you know, say, I hope one day if I get in that situation, I would be lucky enough to have a family like y'all been to her. So, it was certainly noticed by me, and, you know, on her behalf, I would thank you for what you did for. So, God bless you, what you did, and tell Shirley hey, and I hope she's doing better. Thank you.
We appreciate it during COVID that you brought her agendas to the House so she didn't have to go out for months on end, and you did quite a bit, and we appreciate everything you did.
Yeah, thank you.
Karen, any comments?
Yes, sir. First to Dennis, Mr. Gay. Not really sure what you're talking about, but if you would contact me offline, I'd like to learn more, just so I can get up to speed on that. And regarding Shirley, Shirley and Ken, they were friends before we were ever colleagues. I love those two. They were just the spirit of this town. Shirley always, she was a strong woman, she always stood up for what was right, and I really admired that. As Todd just stated, you know, she would be up here with us men, and I mean, she had her opinion and we knew it. She always did things for the right reasons for the residents. She didn't do anything that I could see ever that was personal to benefit her, and I really strive to be like a Shirley Howe. I hope that whenever I leave office, that people would even consider comparing me to her status. She is just one of the most awesome council persons this town is lucky to have. I'm going to miss Shirley, and yeah, I'm just, I'm going to miss her, and thank y'all for coming tonight.
Well, Kathy, I've known Shirley a long time, and Ken also, great people. There aren't words enough to say how I feel about her. They say anyone can be replaced. In Shirley's case, a position can be filled, but she can't be replaced. All my love. case, a position can be filled, but she can't be replaced. All my love to you, your husband, your family, to your mom. And thank you for taking the time to come speak to us.
Thank you.
I will close the council feedback and bring us to law enforcement update. Captain James, to get us back on track, you have about two and a half seconds maybe?
Good to see y'all. Ms. Kathy, please, on behalf of the sheriff and especially me, your, your mother took me in like nobody else when I first came up here. And I cannot thank her enough for the transition, how easy she made my transition up here. So please give her my regards and the sheriff's regards as well.
You thank her, Howard.
Well, I appreciate that. I think, I thank the world of her. The, Mr. Mayor and council, I don't have a whole lot for you tonight and just for the sake of time, but I would like to extend my gratitude for the phone calls, the texts that I've gotten over the last week, week and a half since Deputy Horn's death. A very tragic situation and a set of circumstances. But as I told someone, Chris started his career when he came back or when he came to the sheriff's office from Stiles PD. He was a contract officer here in Indian Trail, very dedicated toward traffic enforcement. And that's how, the only reason he ended up leaving Indian Trail to go to the safe unit, to the sheriff's alcohol field enforcement team. Known Chris for around 26 years. We worked traffic together back when I first came back to Union County, which was then on the, he was with the city of Monroe on their traffic team. Very high regarded officer, Officer of the Year in 2017 for Mothers Against Drunk Driving and did a great deal for the folks in Indian Trail. But again, I would like to extend my thanks to them for the gratitude they've shown us. And like I say every meeting, I cannot say enough about this community and the community in Indian Trail and the people that we, we get to serve. And that's really how I look at it. The, it's, it's like no other place. Other than that, the, the one thing I do want to pass along, our car B and Es are going back up and the biggest reason is people are not hitting the lock button on the cars. So please, take your valuables, AD cars, take your computers and your guns, your large amounts of money, take them in the, in the house with you when you get home in the afternoon and lock your corridors. That seems to stem a lot of that, those issues, especially in these neighborhoods. If anybody's got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Captain. Brings us to the consent agenda. There's no one needs to pull anything. We need a motion to approve.
Submoved.
Mr. Morse has made a motion to approve. All in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to all business, solid waste rerouting. Mr. McLamb?
[inaudible]
Patient. Okay. Well, if we would just, can we take a three minute recess real quick for a restroom break?
Yep.
Okay, we're back. Mr. McLamb?
Mayor, council, how are y'all tonight?
Yes, please speak into the microphone.
So back again to talk a little bit about solid waste rerouting. Remember we talked the last meeting, we talked about just general concepts. So now we've taken it a step further. We've met with the solid waste provider. We've talked through it, kind of a timeline and how we can get there. We've also, at the same time, Pam and myself have talked with Abby about what the town can do to be able to get our information out in order to make sure the public gets as seamless as possible for this rerouting. If you remember what we talked about the last meeting, as far as I know, in the last 15 years, we've never done a rerouting. And I am sure that solid waste routes don't follow development plans. So we are way out of whack on some of our days. The hope is that this will help us to get back into the right timeframe that we are supposed to be picking up service and also to alleviate some of the complaints that we have been getting over the, over the last couple of years. So we've laid out kind of the priorities that each person will be doing. What GB has to do is per their contract. So everything you see there, with the exception of the post at the neighborhood. So you know how they do bulk pickup? They put that sign in front of the neighborhood to say, you know, your bulk pickup is the next time. That's one thing that they're looking at doing at the neighborhoods is to let people know, all right, you've gotten all this information. Remember, your service day has changed. And then that's a list of what we've worked through with Abby on what the town can do, most of it, not quite all of it, what we can do to get our information out to the public as seamless as possible. They've also added another truck. So they are running another truck in service right now. So that's letting them speed up some of their service as well. So I hope we're headed in the positive direction. We're looking at starting this December the 1st. It falls at the beginning of a month. It falls after Thanksgiving. It gives us three weeks before Christmas. So we should be able to get everybody in sequence before then. So that's what we're shooting for right now.
Do you have the proposed routes already mapped out or?
We are getting close. We don't have them exact yet, but we're, we're pretty close to what we're going to be doing. And that's part of what, so one thing that we've talked about is coming back to council, you know, maybe not every council meeting, but at least once a month up until then. And that's one of those meetings, we'll probably show those routes, you know, not down to each individual like house, but like, hey, this area was a Tuesday, now it's going to be a Wednesday, that kind of thing. Just general area. So I would.
You're looking for action from us?
Well, our, the way that our solid waste contract is written, it says that staff can initiate a rerouting. It doesn't say that council needs to make an action. So I'll leave that up to y'all. If y'all want to just head nod or if you don't want to.
It said action here. That's why I, sorry.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I'm fine with just head nods. I'm looking at Karen and she's saying that's, yeah.
Head nod, head nod.
Good, good, good. Thank y'all. And I've got the next item too. So we'll move on to the next one.
Wait, just let us announce. It's the fiscal year 20 stormwater maintenance contract update.
All right. So stormwater maintenance contract. If y'all remember, we do this contract, we've done it in the way that we do it now, the last three years. So we got a little bit of a late start this year due to just a couple of things that were going on. And then the proverbial, you know, COVID hit us and now we're just all kind of like, we were slowed up a little bit even more than that. So what we're looking at doing is delaying our schedule. So we'll issue a stop to, in the contract and then we'll restart their days a little bit later to finish out the, you know, the rest of the contract. In the contract, they have already completed all of the catch basin cleanings and the flared intersection cleanings, which was in the Brandon Oaks neighborhood. And they are going, as you can see, to do Third Avenue. At the end, they're going to start there next Monday. So they'll finish Third Avenue. They'll do all the ditches over there on Third Avenue. And then we'll pick back up on the creek cleaning. That's the one that we're having a little bit of issue with because all the growth right now, it's kind of hard to get in there and do a good job in cleaning the creek. So we want to wait till some of the leaves start to fall so that they can get in there and do a better job. So that's what we're looking at doing is sometime end of 2020, restart the contract, finish up. I've already talked with Ray. Next year, what we'll do is we'll actually try and bid this contract out almost as this contract is finishing up so that we can get ahead of the curve a little bit next year. So we don't run into the same issue. So again, I don't need any action. We just wanted y'all to be aware in case if, you know, somebody was to say something or ask y'all. I am going to reach out to a couple of people that have asked about when we're coming to their area, just with an email, just to let them know that it will be a little bit delayed for the creek cleaning in that area. So.
Again, for the creek cleaning, will there be a map or a notification of folks to kind of be aware of when that's going to happen in their areas or what, maybe posted on the website or?
We can do anything like, I mean, that's definitely something possible we can do. We can show a map of where we've already cleaned in this contract and then where we're gonna, when we start back, where we're gonna clean from there. That's, that's definitely doable.
And all, all the creeks that are running through Indian Trail, Indian Trail's responsibility or do, or some of them county or?
Every creek that is in town jurisdiction is our responsibility to, it's our responsibility to manage the flood plain. So with that, you get the creek. So you have to allow the water to flow through it. So that's why we go in and do the, the creek cleaning.
I, I just wanted to kind of know when you're coming so I can pull the boat out of the creek and not lose that. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm done. Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Okay. Just give me one second, council. Okay. I got this. Okay. That brings us to new business. The first item on the list was, is Evoque, which is a closed hearing. It was, the hearings closed. So basically council can discuss, vote, and public comments time is, period has closed in pursuit with the new virtual meeting statutes that were passed in the state. So I'm just pulling together the public comments that were said. What did PH stand for?
Public hearing.
Okay. Oh, Greenwich and?
We didn't have any for, you know, just the Greenwich and way down.
Okay, good. Thank you. They're, they're good. So there were no further public comments received for Evoque, council. Can we put up what the, thank you, Brandy.
Good evening, mayor and council. This item has actually been requested to be postponed by the applicant as of this afternoon.
Okay. There you go. That made your job easy. Good job. That was quick. All right. That brings us to Greenwich Downs then. There's no action I need to take. Right? No. Okay. That brings us to Greenwich Downs. Okay, that's there. Way go. I got that here.
You need a hand?
No, I got this. It's just this new way of doing things.
Just asking.
Yeah, I know. You keep, yeah. Got to come up with a new joke there, Marcus. I mean, smack my head, you know?
One ampere.
Yeah. So Brandy, you want to?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council.
Or should I read the public comment first? Okay.
The, the first item for consideration, requested action is on annexation 156. This is in conjunction with CZ 2020 0013 Greenwich Downs. And we did receive additional public comments that I believe the mayor is going to read at this time. Following public comment, then we will entertain a motion.
Okay. Public comment from Bonnie Stone. Do not approve this development as proposed. Do what is best for your fellow residents. I'm grateful for the regional weekly's news article for providing information on the Poplin Road development plans. I've lived in Indian Trail for 41 years. There is a desperate need for affordable housing here. I've lived in a 1,400 square foot home, recently remodeled in a beautiful condition valued at around $200,000. Why in the world would town management consider 1,400 square foot houses starting at $300,000 would, or would be a good fit for our area? This is an insult to our people. It's so far off the beam as far as affordable housing. The average Union County resident could not venture to afford to purchase a house that size at that price. We need you to give attention to many, to the many problems with the infrastructure needs with our present housing. Please consider approving developments that are reasonably affordable for the residents of our city and county. I would like my grown children to be able to afford to live here. Okay. That was number one. Number two, from a Margaret Brown, to whom it may concern, and please be advised that this email serves to voice my vote against the construction of single family homes and town homes within the southern quadrant of the Poplin Road and Bonterra well, Bonterra Village intersection. Next one is from Mary Ann Frizzle. First, thank you for your time and service to our community. As a property owner and a 35-year resident of Indian Trail, I have seen a lot of growth and development in our area. From the older established communities to the more recently established communities, including Lake Park, Bonterra, Fieldstone Farms, and Indian Trail. Union County is a great place to live. I am a property owner whose property will be annexed for construction, will be annexed for construction of the Greenwich Downs on Poplin Road. I was to express my wholehearted approval of this annexation and rezoning. In public hearings regarding this development, no objections. Was that continued hers? Okay, yes. In, in public hearings regarding this development, no objections were raised to the development of Greenwich Downs, only a few questions regarding schools arose. In fact, those attending the public hearings were highly in favor of the Greenwich Downs project. Developments take several years to build out and all indications are that by the year 2026, there will only be a slight increase, about 2% in student population in pre-K through eighth grades. The reroute of Poplin Road for access to the bypass has greatly improved traffic flow. It moves smoothly and efficiently even in the morning and evening rush hours. Perhaps I am more aware of the flow of the traffic than others because the reroute of Poplin Road runs right behind my home. Bonterra Village Way provides a convenient access to Faith Church Road, Seacrest Shortcut, and Highway 74. Bonterra, Annandale, and other residents have ease, have easy access to the bypass via two different routes, Unionville Indian Trail Road and Indian Trail Fairview Road. Likewise, future residents of Greenwich Downs will also have good highway access. These facts support the annexation and rezoning of this new development. And Sarah Bays, thank you for taking the time to hear my comments. My husband and I moved to, into our home in Indian Trail 20 years ago. We raised five children here who all attend public school. Due to the development which has occurred over several years, my children attend three different elementary schools while they, while they were growing up, starting at Sardis Elementary, then Porter Ridge, and finally Poplin Elementary. We have seen somewhat, we have seen much construction in and around our area along with an influx of residents who have made Indian Trail their home. Throughout all of this, we have never complained, but accepted the minor inconveniences of road construction and development as signs of progress. We are property owners whose property is set to be annexed into the town of Indian Trail for the purpose of construction of the Greenwich Downs project on Poplin Road, and we would like to convey our absolute support for this improvement. I would like to remind the council that although traffic has increased in our area, Poplin Road was recently rerouted to improve traffic flow. Residents can easily access Faith Church Road, Seacrest Shortcut, and Highway 74 by way of Bonterra Village Way. Additionally, both Unionville Indian Trail Road and Indian Trail Fairview Road provide easy access to the new bypass. It has been brought to my attention that there may be some concerns regarding overcrowding of the schools with the development of Greenwich Downs. I would like to point out that these fears are unsupported as students can, as studies conducted by the U.S. Department of Education suggest that there will be only a minor rise in school age population, about 2% over the next six years. With three elementary schools within just a few miles of the property, the growth rate is not unmanageable. Again, I would like to thank you for, oh my, for considering my comments and for your support for Greenwich Downs project. That was all the public comments on Greenwich Downs. Brandy?
So at this time, we'll entertain a motion and then council can discuss and ask additional questions if they so choose.
Is there a discussion for the council?
No. Mike?
Mike? Well, do you have any discussion on the project?
Make the motion first and then you can discuss. Yes, sir.
Okay, make the motion first. And which?
So this has three different motions?
Correct. Yes, sir. Councilmember McIntyre, we would start with the annexation number 156.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve annexation number 156. That read correctly?
Yes. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve annexation 156. All in favor?
Or is there discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion? Sorry.
Can we, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Jerry, you had comment first?
Well, no.
Jerry said no.
No? Okay. Mike, did you have something?
Brandy, water and sewer. We've, we've seen a couple of different gyrations floating around. Can you kind of put the, the latest and greatest?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Councilmember. Councilmember Head, let me see if I can summarize this. So part of our rezoning process is we do not allow applicants to go before plan and board without verifying that there's utilities. So we don't want to waste our time, nor the developers' time or money, certainly not council's. So that was confirmed on March the 16th, that there was capacity for water and sewer. Sewer did require easements, but that's, that's, you know, fairly typical with our town. And so we moved them forward to plan and board. The applicant was in contact up until about August the 7th with the same, the same understanding that there was capacity. And then we did receive a letter late Wednesday saying that there was insufficient capacity in this area. It's my understanding, I know I received at least five emails, but it's my understanding that every development within that area received those emails within that same timeframe saying that there was insufficient capacity for the project. The applicant, we discussed this with the applicant, they have decided they would like to move forward, and the reason why is that Union County Public Works is currently working on an equalization tank that will increase capacity, that, that could accommodate most of these projects, from my understanding. And that timeline falls pretty well within the timeline of this project. So it's projected December 2021. The applicant has indicated, you know, that that's the same timeframe that they would, you know, somewhere close in that area they would be looking at connecting on. It's my opinion that we are not in the water and sewer business, so, you know, we, we did our due diligence in making sure before we put it through the process. And certainly, you know, Union County Public Works ultimately holds, holds the keys to that for sure. I believe that, you know, the, the applicant wants to move forward, and, and certainly I think that it would be appropriate for the council to, to consider it. I don't think by any means that this, this means that we, you know, would have to stop this project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Okay. Oh, just to clarify that they do want to move forward, and they do understand there could be delays in starting their project.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Barber, they have indicated that this is, you know, at their risk to move forward. So if they gain approval, you know, obtaining water and sewer from the county would be, would be on them.
So we'll make sure they understand the risk?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dyes.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We'll need the first motion.
The motion was made, so the motion's on the table.
Motion to approve Annexation 156 was made by Mr. McIntyre. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Before, before the other motion is made, if, if another motion is made, do we also have discussion again at every op, every time? Okay. So Ms. Dyes, what would be the next motion? Because we went before first, the annexation.
The next motion is for CZ 2020-0013, and this would be the first in the two-step process.
So the consistency findings?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Then, okay.
And then, and then a final approval? I don't know.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the consistency findings for CZ 2020-013.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to appro-
Is... You gotta open it up for... Is it 1A or B?
Oh, right.
I didn't know.
1A.
Well...
The consistency findings. All right.
It's, so it's, it's Item C, number two. Because the mayor did the first one.
I'm talking about your motion.
Is the motion?
Approve the consistency findings.
A or B?
A.
It's, oh, well, sorry. I'm, I'm going off of this. I'm sorry. Let me look at the screen. I'll, I'll read the motion again. Apologies. So, motion to adopt, I'll make a motion to adopt a statement of consistency as consistent or is consistent as read by staff.
All right. We want discussion on this?
And I would be glad to read that consistency statement if anyone has any concerns about this.
I think it's prudent to read it.
And it's part of the ordinance. It's included as part of the ordinance, and so it's covered in the paperwork that we have before the...
So does she need to read it?
She does not.
No? Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? Mr. Head? Mr. Morse? Mr. Barber? Mr. McIntyre?
No.
Nope. So that motion's been made as consistent with the statement of consistency findings as read into record. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We need another motion.
Motion to approve CZ 2020-013 petition as presented by staff.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve CZ 2020-0013. All in favor? Unless you have something to...
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Because I know it's been a little bit controversial. You know, this project was one of those, at least for the public's knowledge, that it came to, I believe it was the county first?
Yes.
And then, and they went to the county, and this project had apartments, townhomes, a lot more density, a lot less amenities, a lot less appealing if I was to live in that area. And so now that this, the particular interested people have come to Indian Trail and are requesting... They were shot down at the, at the county, you know, for the hope, for the apartments. So now, you know, there's been discussions with the county about our feelings about this, and, and so now these, the county denied it, and so they've come back to Indian Trail. And they realize coming to Indian Trail with apartments over there was going to just be not good, and not with this council. So somewhere along the line, they have redesigned that to just be townhomes and homes, which is, really fits into that area, and that is one of the reasons that, that I will support this when it comes to vote. I just wanted to put that on public record for, for the people out there to understand better why I am actually voting for this project.
Any other comments? Motion's on the table to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Board of Adjustment. There were no public comments received on that.
Mayor and counsel, we did not receive any additional comments that I'm aware of on this item. So this, this again is a text amendment, a simple change in the number of members for the Board of Adjustment, as we had talked about before. Five members makes it very difficult with the requirements of quasi-judicial hearings. So we're recommending seven regular members instead of the five, and eliminating the alternate members.
So question for you, based on, and I'll, members will have other questions, but do we go with 1, 2, do we go with 2, 3, 4, or there's a different order in terms of, oh, it's right, you know, I keep looking at this. I need to look. All right. But that, that is the revision. The motion really is on, where's the motion? Sorry.
Just a second.
That's it right there? All right.
Right. So you're going to do the consistency statement and then a final?
Okay. Yeah. I'll let the mayor ask if there's any questions.
Any questions by counsel on this one? Discussion?
No, sir.
Prior to the motions? Makes it a little bit smoother.
Yeah, we just got to ask, you know? I'll make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as consistent and read by staff for zoning text 2020-0086.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, has made the motion to adopt the statement of consistency as read into record as consistent? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any discussion on the second part of it? Just to make sure. Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve zoning text 2020-0086 petition as presented by staff.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve ZT 2020-0086. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyes.
That brings us to the Hallfield Road closing as we wait for a Mr. ...
Excuse me, mayor. Did I miss something? Did we do the bylaws for the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, that was just done.
No, it was not. It's, it's on the sheet, but good, quite, good catch, Kathy. It's on the sheet, but it's not on, on, unless we need to go to the next page.
It was part of...
Oh, do we have?
It is, it is on the sheet.
It is on the sheet.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the sheet, but it's not on the screen, so...
Yeah, the agenda just does the zoning text change in the UDO. This is a separate piece bylaw that goes with it, sort of.
That's right.
So then, look, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Green.
I made a motion to...
I'm gonna try and make it. I want to make a motion to adopt the amended bylaws, sorry, the Board of Adjustment bylaws for the town of Indian Trail.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to adopt the amended bylaws for the Board of Adjustment. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Kathy. We're all looking at the screen, and it wasn't up there.
Two different things.
Screen failed me.
Mine was the guy who heard the motions.
We've become slaves to the screen. Okay. Mr. Hunsinger, you're up with Hallfield Ridge. There is one additional public comment. I will read from Dan Crowley. "My name is Dan Crowley, and I live at 1015 Magna Lane, Indian Trail, in the Taylor-Glen subdivision. This property is adjacent to Hallfield Road. It is my understanding that the council is dealing with the possibility of closing Hallfield Road. I am totally in favor of closing Hallfield Road. As the resolution points out, half of the road would be vested in those persons owning lots or parcels of land adjacent to the road, as the current right-of-way of Hallfield Road is 30 feet. I have noticed that Heritage LLC has already taken their half of said right-of-way, so I would suggest that it is a done deal, which I am in favor of. Thank you for your service to the town." Okay. You're up.
Mayor, counsel, I really don't have nothing to say. We're, we're actually asking you to pass this resolution. We went through the process based on the statute, and I don't foresee any issues with it.
So just, we just need a motion, right?
Yes. Before you make that motion, everybody remembers what was clear with Hallfield Road. Okay. Thank you. Mr. McIntyre?
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R., number R. 200825-01.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take a deep breath. You made it through all that. That brings us to Item F, tuition reimbursement policy.
Struggling a little bit with my leg tonight. I'm sorry. All right. Okay. Good evening, council. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Oh, can you hear me?
Speak into the microphone.
Sorry. So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about a tuition reimbursement program. In your packet, you should have a draft and a summary of what I'm going to speak with you about tonight. Not sure if everybody's aware, but currently, the town does not have a tuition reimbursement program. So I've done some research and looked at some other municipalities to see what they're, what they're providing for their employees. The purpose of the program is, and the objective, is to encourage employees to take courses that will improve their performance in their present position and/or help prepare for positions of higher responsibility. I put together a slide showing what other municipalities are doing in our area. And as you can see in red, I highlighted Indian Trail. That is my recommendation for staff, a maximum of $3,000 payable per fiscal year per employee. I'll give you a minute just to look at that. You know, it's kind of on the higher end of the scale, but I came up with that number based off of what UNCC's rates are. It's about $3,800 per semester for a graduate program and about $3,000 per semester for an undergrad program. So, you know, it's a little bit less than 50%, but I thought it was a, a good number to start with. Funding for the program would be determined by and subject to appropriation by the council at the beginning of each fiscal year. Funding would be approved for employees on a first-come, first-served basis, based off of what the council approved for that fiscal year. To be eligible for the, the program, employees would need to be full-time. They would need to have met the performance expectations of their supervisor, and they will have, need to have been employed with us for at least a year. As I said before, you have the draft policy in front of you, and, you know, I hope you will consider this for our staff. It is something that a lot of them have asked for over the years. I do exit interviews on all of our employees when they leave, and this is something that they've all suggested. So I hope you will consider my recommendation, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions? For Ms. Warner? Mr. Head? Mr. Morse? Your hand up?
Yeah, I do. When would you need to, let me rephrase this. Since this is a new program, I assume it would start next year?
I mean, we, we could start it this year. I think Jim would have to do some kind of transfer of funds, but we could, we could start it this year, I believe. I don't think it has to be part of the budget process.
How many employees?
We have 50 full-time employees. When we're fully staffed. Right now, we have about 43.
So this could be potentially 150,000, but 50 right now?
Yes, but not everybody is going to be...
Sure.
Wanting to jump on this. Some will, some won't.
I'm sorry. Were there any conditions as far as having to stay on if you do receive this tuition?
Yes.
Okay.
So part of the policy is that you would be required to stay on for two years. If you left before two years, you would be required to pay it all back.
Thank you.
So...
Mr. McIntyre?
Based on what you, just to piggy, piggyback off Mr. Morse's question, based on what you said, it's a first-come, first-served basis, right? So it wouldn't necessarily be open to all employees. We'd probably put a cap on it based on the amount we put. Let's say we put $3,000, it's just the first person who comes, that's it. So that's kind of what council would have to kind of decide as well.
Yeah, and we could do it a couple of different ways, but my recommendation would be to kind of put a pot together at the beginning of the budget cycle. I would expect supervisors to speak with their staff to try to get a feel for, for who's wanting to, you know, get part of this program. And then we would try to come up with a number that way. You know, it's kind of like what we do for the health reimbursement arrangement. We estimate.
And, and my apologies because I did not read the packet that you put together. I apologize for that. But let me just ask one other question. Is it, it's a reimbursement program, which means they pay first, they get reimbursed. Is it based on grades as well? That there's a tiered level? So that's, okay. So it's really consistent with what's really out here right now?
So you have to maintain a C or higher?
Okay.
And submit your grades and everything when you're finished?
All right. I've used that. It's, it really does, it really does help employees because I've used that in the past at some of the places that I've worked. I do have a question for Mr. Allen. Question would be, sir, and that's for you, but also Jim as well. I know that we have some money that we looked at at the end of the year that we will put into the fund balance, but based on some of the revisions that you guys have done and how well we've done from a sales tax perspective, we do have additional funds that we would be putting back to the fund balance, right?
Yes, sir. At the end...
I'm sorry. But, but then also, we do have a contingency that we put in that we, if we need be. You, in other words, if we said to you what we need, what we'd like to put in, you would you would be able to go in and find the money, so to speak.
Yes, sir. As you pointed out, the town added considerable amount to its general fund fund balance for the fiscal year just ending June 30, somewhere in excess of $1.5 million additional into the general fund. And of course, we also are going to be receiving some of the CARES Act funding that was, none of that was budgeted. And we budgeted a quarter of a million dollar contingency in the general fund in the current budget year. So there are certainly more than adequate funding if council wanted to go ahead and start that program in the current year, you know, deciding upon an amount of money that you thought would be reasonable, $25,000 or $50,000 or whatever, and that could be transferred from contingency.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the answer. Mr. Mayor, that's all I had for...
I have one question.
Okay.
Which just...
Question too, after you go ahead.
Which just jumped into my mind when they said it could be budgeted for this year. The school semester started, would it count for people, for anyone that's already enrolled in a...
I guess it would depend on when you'd make the policy effective.
Well, yes.
So, I mean, we could technically go back a month.
Well, it's about a week.
Or, yeah, we can make it effective August 15.
You can make it retroactive, what you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can.
That would be...
Yes, we could make it effective for the fiscal year, beginning July 1st would probably be the easiest thing to do.
Okay. That answers that.
Okay, yeah. Timing seems weird. I thought the guy we hired had plenty of education. You need some tuition assistance back there, are we okay? So anyway, but is the tuition professional directive, meaning, does it have to stay in their field? Like if they're engineering, you'll pay for engineering? I mean, are we, you know, we're not just going to pay for any major out there, correct?
No, we're not going to pay for...
Is it professional directive then?
Yes. It has to fall in line with government work.
I know a lot of corporations do it that way, if you, you know. They're not paying you to get educated, they leave usually, so...
Exactly.
The idea, hmm, thank you.
I do have a question. Currently, how many people do you think would utilize the program if it was available?
I was kind of thinking about that earlier. I would probably say maybe five at the max right now.
So if we were to approve a 3,000 times five or 10, that would probably, as a first pass, be adequate in y'all's opinion? Or is that not enough?
I, I think that's enough for, for first pass, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Is this a motion to approve tonight?
I think it can be.
It can be if you are all ready to approve it, for sure. If you would like to review it before, more thoroughly.
I'm sorry. Do we want to talk about the money we set aside?
It seems like there ought to be a set amount.
Yeah.
A set amount?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yes.
For this year?
Yeah, for this year.
Put how much money in the pool they can put. Correct, yeah, that's good, what he said.
Twenty-one, what about 21,000?
I was going to say 30.
30, there you go.
I mean, I'm leaning at Mike.
It doesn't have to get used, it'll...
Yeah.
It's just...
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
You said that was 3,000 per year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a good number.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if Carrie were to come and say someone else wanted to go, it can be, will be brought to council, could it not?
Oh, sure, certainly you all have budget control over this item, so it's, will be your discretion to do with it as you see fit.
Okay. Also use that as your guidance. Was there a number? I heard several different...
Heard 30.
I would say 30.
Todd, what's your view?
30's good. So...
So we're going to need two motions. One would be to adopt the policy, and then the second would be to instruct staff to amend the budget to, you know, to allow it to happen, at whatever number y'all prefer.
You guys good?
Yeah, I do have a question. So let's say that we do this program, okay? And for whatever reason, you know, budget season comes next year. We can always modify the amounts, correct?
Yes, yes, that's in the, in the policy.
Those are New York control.
All right, so...
But one more thing, you could even stop the policy.
Yep.
So this is all within your discretion, completely within y'all's discretion.
Yeah, somebody would have to bring it to you before the budget is adopted every year, to get your recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
So, I want to make a motion to adopt the tuition reimbursement policy as presented by Mrs. Warner.
Okay, and retroactive?
Oh, and, and make the, the policy start date be Ju-, July 1, 2020.
Okay. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to adopt the tuition reimbursement policy, retroactive to this year's budget of July 1, 2020. All in favor? That would be unanimous.
I'd like to make a second motion to instruct the town manager and the finance department to, to fund this tuition reimbursement policy to the tune of $30,000 with a retroactive date of July 1, 2020. I do not need to specify, the manager will know where to get the funds from. Okay, good.
Okay. Weren't you putting them in personally?
What was that?
Weren't you going to put them in personally?
I do not have that kind of screw around.
Oh, okay. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to begin the fund balance with $30,000, retroactive again to this year's 2020 budget, effective July 1, 2020. All in favor? That too passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing before you leave. I want to say thanks to you for working on this, right? We, as the council, we do value the staff. When we say we value you, we really do. And if we can do things that can help your professional life, we would do whatever we can to do so. So we thank you for your time on this, and hopefully that can help some of the staff, you know, get certain educational requirements that they may need. But thank you.
Thank you, this will make staff very happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Park Committee, seat nomination. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How's everyone doing this evening?
Good, man.
Hope you're doing well.
Absolutely, every, every day is a good day. So very quickly, just a nomination to fill our seat five position on the park board. Mr. Alex Sayer served on the park board previously. As you know, all terms expired at the end of June, so he is reapplied. The chair has nominated him, just coming to you to seek approval to seat him in seat five with a termination date of 6/30/2022.
Council have any question?
Was he the only nominee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll need a motion. Right, oh, we don't need a motion, do we? We do. We need a motion to appoint him, that's right. It's a long day. Want to make the motion? Go.
I'll make a motion.
I will, I will make that motion to recommend Mr. Alex Sayer to seat five with a termination date of 6/22, the PARC Committee.
Okay. Mr. Morse has made the nomination, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Hayden. That brings us to award the fiscal year 2021 Fall Resurfacing Contract. Hold wait. Time to come back. I feel like the People's Court and they're going to just walk right in.
Where's our bailiff?
Oh, where's our bailiff, yes.
Oh, got the gems, man.
Kathy.
I didn't, I didn't think I was going to go so quick, Mr. Hayden, but anyway. All right, I'm here for the FY 2021 Resurfacing Contract Notice to Award. Just to give you a little brief history, we, the town has decided to move forward with this, this project. Advertising started in July 31st. We did a pre-bid August 2nd, and we bid open on August 14th. Now, if you recall, this FY 2021 Fall Resurfacing Contract is for, is kind of a split funding situation between us and Bonterra HOA. We are basically doing some of their improvements on their roadways, once we took them over last year. And then we're doing one or two roads on ours, and of course, you saw the maps in the last council meeting, so you should be aware of the locations. Again, we did the bid opening. The bid came at $511,483.50. That was below our engineering estimate. So I would like to propose action to give notice of award to Blythe Brothers Asphalt Company LLC.
Any questions?
Any questions?
What's the amount again, Todd? What's the amount that Bonterra paid to the town? Any idea?
I want to say about 336-ish. Not, I don't have the exact number.
But the majority of the roads will be in Bonterra?
Uh, yes, sir. For this, this contract. Again, we'll do a spring contract in March.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? If not, we'll need a motion.
You guys good and can make the motion?
Yeah, we're good.
All right. Make a motion to award the fiscal year 20, 2021 Fall Resurfacing Contract for the Town of Indian Trail.
Does he have to name the company?
Oh, sorry. What's the name of the company?
Blythe Brothers Asphalt.
All right, sorry.
Yeah, Company LLC.
All right, so let's just try it again. We'll start from the top. I'll make a motion to award the 2021 Fall Resurfacing Contract for the Town of Indian Trail to Blythe Brothers Construction or Asphalt Company.
Blythe Brothers Asphalt, yes.
Yes, Blythe Brothers Asphalt.
Say that real fast. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to award the fiscal year 2021 Fall Resurfacing Contract to Blythe Brothers Asphalt Company LLC.
Correct.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Todd.
All right, thank you.
And that brings us to the CARES Act Funding Agreement. Did you want to handle that right?
I guess so. Thank you, Mayor.
We received this agreement from the county late last week, and that's why we had to add it to the agenda today. We did not receive it in time for the published agenda. Jim and I have been keeping council informed about the legislation that now requires part of the funding to go directly to municipalities through the counties. Essentially, 25% of the funding that the county received should go to the municipalities if they apply for it. And so there are 14 municipalities in Union County. 10 municipalities applied for the funding, and the county staff reviewed all the requests and then put together their plan. And in that plan, they are allocating $506,596,000 to Indian Trail. And the purposes for which that funding will be used is laid out in the information that we previously gave you. And they have submitted to us, along with all the other municipalities, an intergovernmental and subrecipient agreement for council to approve. They have asked that this be approved. Timing worked out well. They want this back next week so that they can move this up forward to the state for approval. And so we're requesting council to approve this tonight. As I've mentioned before, Jim Watowitz in the finance department has worked to put our plan together. We checked with Central Indiana Council of Governments, and our plan does meet the requirements of the state. And so we'd like to move ahead with this so that we can get these funds for the Town of Indian Trail.
Okay, any questions?
You require some action from us, sir?
Yes, sir, it requires approval of this subrecipient agreement, Mr. McIntyre.
Approval of what agreement?
Subrecipient.
Oh, subreci...
The county is the recipient, we're the subrecipients.
Sorry, yeah, all right, I, I got you, I didn't hear the second part. That's all I had.
If there's no questions, we'll need a motion.
I'm on a roll, let's go.
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the CARES Act Funding Agreement as we, the Town of Indian Trail is the subrecipient to the tune of $506,596, sir?
Yes, sir.
That is correct.
All right, I'm not going to repeat all that. Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That brings us to your manager's update.
Yes, sir. I only have one item tonight, Mayor. This will be my last council meeting with the Town of Indian Trail.
You couldn't say that quicker than I could.
Come on, man.
I want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to congratulate you on the appointment of your new manager. I've known Mike McLaurin since the late 80s, I guess, since he was working at Central Indiana Council of Governments. He's a highly ethical individual, experienced individual, is very knowledgeable about this region, and I think he will, will work well with the town and with the staff. And I congratulate you on his appointment. I also want to say, appreciate the opportunity to work with you as your interim manager. It's been a very interesting and challenging time. You know, less than a month after I came to work here, we were dealing with a global pandemic, which none of us were anticipating. But I think the town has done a good job navigating its way to this point so far. I appreciate the council's leadership in that. And I really want to say that I think you've got a fine staff here in Indian Trail. I definitely have, have enjoyed working with them. I commend them to you, they, they really are very good. And I commend you for supporting them. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Council comments?
First off, I'd like to say thanks to the Lions Club. We got Lions Club Indian Trail President Wayne Courtney in the back, so thanks for all they're doing in the community. I'd like to thank the professionalism and the job that our town clerk, Ms. Kathy Queen, does. We always have everything approved and these agendas put together, and it's very nice, very well done. Thank you. I'd like to welcome Mr. McLaurin back there. I don't know if the public knows it, but we had applications from over 17 states, and we still chose a good old North Carolina guy. So he comes well-experienced, and we're pretty all excited about what you're bringing to the town. And I'm sure that you'll come right in in the footsteps of what Mr. Allen has done here. It's kind of like Mr. Allen's got us on the right tracks. He's done a great job in the interim. And we're looking forward to not missing a beat in the professionalism and the great service that, that we think you're going to bring to the town. So, welcome aboard. And also, I'd like to give a shout out to Ms. Howe. She's probably going to listen to this. We thank you for your service. We are going to miss you, we love you, and we're wishing you the best. And we, on half the town, all I can say is, thank you, thank you, thank you for the great job you did and the professionalism, and you served the town with honor and integrity, and you can hold your head high, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Head?
Well, my colleague said, said it all. I'd just like to thank Mr. Allen for his work in stepping in. He did a phenomenal job. Michael, we're looking forward to seeing you here in just a matter of a week or so. And Ms. Shirley. Without her, you wouldn't have me, okay? So, you know, she was the one that, I, I was on the planning board, started coming to the meetings at the old town hall. This lady walked up to me and introduced herself, and we started talking and met her husband, and before long, she said, "What do you think about running for council?" "Not interested." Well, she kept on and on and on, went to her house, talked a number of times, found out that, and, and listening to, to her siblings, the, I, I probably do need a pickup truck to take all of her information that she's gathered. And I'd like to look through it, I'd like to understand it better. I think it's going to help me as a, as a, as a council member. And Shirley, we miss you. Good luck and Godspeed. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Mr. Allen, sometimes in life, there's right man, right time, right job. So that, that, that's what, that's what happened. We knew the pandemic was coming, so we brought you in, Will Kaito. Keep us, you know, keep us going. But, so I want to thank you for your professionalism and for your service, your time. The calming effect you have, you had over the staff and the way you made the transition in, that was really good. Came in right, in budget season. That process was, had already started, but this was one of our best budget processes, so I, I want to say thank you for that. And we, we also appreciate you letting us know that we do have a fine staff, so we really think that we do. Mr. McLaurin, welcome aboard, sir. If we said you're a good guy, then that's all I need, right?
He's one of the best, actually.
He's, I just need to know how I can get into the order of the long leaf pine. I mean, I kind of want one of those there, but, but, but thank you very much. It was a pleasure serving with Ms. Howe. She, she was unafraid of, of serving here. Although there were four men up here throughout her time, but she was unafraid, and she served with distinction, and she also served for a long time. She had a problem, she came to a meeting, and that's how she got involved. And that shows in terms of how people can get involved and make a difference in the community. Stormwater was one of the things that was really near and dear to her, and we know that even to this day, we still have challenges with the stormwater. So she really was a pioneer in that area for the town, so we do appreciate her service. And Shirley, if you're listening, we thank you all for all that you've done for the town. Staff, again, we appreciate you guys for keeping us together. Mrs. Quinn, thank you for, I missed that one item there, so I apologize, but the thing is, you have my back, and you made sure I didn't, so I appreciate all that you do. And council, again, thanks for a good meeting. Mr. Mayor, if you ever need a hand, just let me know.
Be careful what you ask for. Oh, God. My apologies. Well, when Shirley came back on to council, was appointed, and I was given strict instructions that I was not allowed to gavel her, ever. And that was by my campaign manager, ever. But I did gavel her once, and let's just say, just by the look on her face, it was only once because she just wouldn't have nothing of it. So, when they say she was probably one of the strongest individuals that ever served on this council, that's an understatement. All my love, Shirley, and good health to you. Ray? If I knew you were going to bring a pandemic with you, we might have thought a little bit differently. No, I mean, Marcus said it, said it right. You were the right man at the right time and for the right situation. It's been an honor to have you here. And enjoy going back into retirement and for your next job. And, you know, if you go for another interim job, I'll say, if you ever need a hand, I have only one to lend you. But thanks for all your kind words during, and encouragement during my illness, which you were here for. I appreciate that. Mr. Mike, Mr. Michael, look forward to serving with you. Known you a long time. Seen you in action. And wish you years of success here, and then you start on the 31st. I don't have to be nice to you anymore, so, just kidding. Oh, oh, don't, don't, don't. That's, he's probably right. But anyway, we're going to go, everybody. Thanks for a great meeting handling, thanks for those that showed up. And I know, that's my time. I'll see you there. Oh, getting anxious, I'll just talk another 20 minutes. Maybe I'll call Senator Johnson and keep him on the phone. But no, seriously, good health to everyone, stay safe, God bless.
And Mr. Morrison?
Well, thanks, everyone, for coming tonight, of course, and those that chose to stay home and watch this on YouTube. I'm glad to see the council vote for this tuition reimbursement. I think staff professional development is very important, especially for retaining. You know, over the years, we've had this kind of a door of training up employees here and then having, watching them leave for one reason or another. So, you know, investing in training is a, is a good thing. I'm glad to see that. We've had a lot of challenges, and I'm glad to see that Ray was here during these challenges. You really are the, I guess, was it the league of municipalities?
Yes.
They couldn't have suggested anyone better. And I'm just thankful to have been able to serve while you were here. The staff, y'all, you know, we can't say kind enough things. You're all remarkable, you kept this really going through this COVID, and it's not over yet. But y'all really are the, the engine that could. And, and I had a conversation with Brandy that, you know, that I don't feel that the staff works for the town manager, that works for the council. I really feel like we're all in this together, and that we work with each other and not for. And y'all are the best. So, you know, we've had a couple of developers come before us recently with some projects that showed up and disappeared, and there's been a lot of questions behind the scenes, and the staff has always been so available to, to answer those quickly. And thank you very much, it really helps us. Shirley, you know, Shirley and I, we used to have some really good rounders regarding code enforcement. And these were great conversations because any time that we can, as a person, can engage in a true conversation and listen to the other person of what they're trying to say to us and their point of view. I used to be so anti-code enforcement. I mean, if they were coming, I was, you know, yeah. I wasn't real happy to see them. But I didn't understand all of what code enforcement does. And just recently, we have an issue, an issue here in town where code enforcement is involved. But the thing about Shirley is that when she would have these discussions with me, at the end of it, we were still friends. We would just pleasantly agree to disagree, and she would never change her mind.